Our AV is live. All right, fantastic. Members of public, as we transition from our closed session, let our councilwoman return to her seat and then we will go ahead and kick off this evening's council meeting. Well, welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting this evening, and I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd like to pass it to our clerk to call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Katz.
Here.
Cosmore?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Mulner?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Wood?
Yeah.
Great, we do not have any absent members this evening, so council and members of public, you'll have your agenda in front of you for this evening's city council meeting. Be looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda by council.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Cosmore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Discussion on this evening's agenda. Katie, please call roll.
Katz.
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Well, we have an approved agenda, and at this time, we'd like to open up for public comment. So anybody wishing to make a comment, make sure that light is green, and if you could state your name and address for us before your comments.
Tammy Gores, 311-46 Bayview. Y'all know who I am. I'm here because I'm a resident, and I want to thank Mayor Schumate, Chief of Police, and City Administrator Rick Tangway, Sergeant Bruce Bullard, Bill Baker, city attorneys, all the girls in the office, for coming to the very good conclusion of canceling our Fourth of July carnival. It was a very hard decision to make, but in light of what happened in Washington, six rides tipped over there, and one of those rides were one of the rides that was tagged "do not operate." So I'm very thankful that we canceled this event. And that's all I got to say.
Well, before you leave, it needs to be an incredible shout-out to you, Tammy Gores, our Parks and Recreation Director, for the absolute mountains that you moved to plan and to support what was the planned execution, to be there for days on end as we entered and approached the festivities, and to rally your amazing Parks and Recreation Department and all the members that are a part of it, who make everything possible. You put on a phenomenal Fourth of July festivities more broadly, and the fact that we had to make the difficult decision on the carnival was parlayed to what is amazing fireworks, amazing festivities, amazing bands, amazing food entertainment and beer tents. So just congratulations to you and the team.
Thank you. And after all that, I think everything went very well.
I completely agree.
You did a good job.
It was a very hard decision because of all the planning, and it was our sixteenth year, and we wanted to make it very special. So we did.
You and many came together to make it very special, and I'm just so incredibly proud and grateful for the teams coming together with the right process and the right data to make the right decision for that. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Tammy, I was there with you when we were making these decisions, and you were on an emotional roller coaster. I could, you know, you were, I hate to say, you know, ride, but you were up, down, you could tell how deflated you were, and I think you did a great job, so good work.
And to all of those involved, including Chief Tangway and everybody that you mentioned, Tammy, I'm just forever grateful, so thank you. Are there any other members of public that would like to address council this evening? If so, just state your name and address, and make sure that light is still green.
Hi, my name's Heather Smiley. I live at 17105 Grange in Riverview. And the reason I'm here today is because I wanted to let you know that you're going to have a choice on the ballot this year. I'm running for U.S. Congress, so Heather Smiley. And I just wanted to let you know why I think you have a choice regardless of what side of the fence you are on, because I like to think I'm on the people's fence. Anyway, I have extensive background in data analytics and business experience, and I haven't been happy with the way our government's been handling things lately, so I thought I'd do something about it. So I'm the candidate that will be running against Debbie Dingell. And one of the things I wanted to take a brief opportunity to point out to yourselves and the residents here, because I come to Gibraltar all the time, it rocks. Some of my favorite restaurants are here. Anyway, among the other activities, so one of the things that, you know, being at proximity to the river and what have you, my opponent has voted down every single border security thing that's passed her desk, including not sending back illegals that have assaulted police officers. So, one of the other things, you know, with all the channels and stuff in Gibraltar, there's a lot of people who fish, and obviously, being on the river, there's a lot of people who go hunting for ducks. And one of the recent pieces of legislation that my opponent voted on was to regulate for fishermen, you know, anglers and hunters, the use of lead, whether it's in their birdshot or even if they put a lead weight on their fishing line. So there's a lot of legislation that's being passed that a lot of people aren't aware of. One of the things from a municipal perspective is I'd like to keep the tax dollars that you guys and your residents pay, I'd rather keep those in the pockets of the people and the municipalities. To Debbie's credit, she has given back to some of the municipalities, and everybody's happy about it, but gosh, wouldn't it be great if you had the money and you could keep the money in your pocket to begin with, instead of beg-borrowing and stealing and then be grateful when you get a grant or something? So I wanted to introduce myself, and I will be here for the entire meeting if anybody would like to talk to me after. I'll be available. My website is HeatherSmileyForCongress.com, and my Facebook site is HeatherSmileyForCongress. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Any other members of public have a comment for us this evening?
Hello, my name's Mariah Van Kalberg. I am here representing the Gibraltar-Rockwood Rotary. Couple of things, we just wanted to come and say hi to you guys, first off, and a couple of things we wanted to kind of talk about, our organization, what we're doing, things that are coming up, so kind of everybody knows what's going on, and then also talk to you about a project that we want to spearhead with the city. So, first off, I want to thank Marcia because she covers a lot of stuff for us, so we appreciate it, trying to keep everybody informed of what we're doing and, you know, our events and things like that. So, and then everybody that did purchase tickets from us this Fourth of July week, we did quite well. We were hoping for a little bit more, but we're pushing them along, so we do have duck tickets and raffle tickets available still. So please, if you guys are looking for duck tickets or sportsman's raffle tickets, they are available from us. The city hall has them, Mercury Insurance in Rockwood, any member has them, as well as the Rich Gas Station here in town. And they are, and the Music in the Park, so if you guys are looking for tickets. You can also purchase via Venmo through our Facebook page, the Venmo information is on there, so we just send you a picture of your ticket after the Venmo is received. So, other thing too, is that we are in desperate need of volunteers for the kayak poker run. So if anybody is available, we are looking for people AM, PM, all day, whatever you can help us with, on August 10th. It's an all-day event, we start at 8:00 a.m. and we don't end until 8, 9 o'clock that night. So we're looking for people to help set up, take down, serve drinks, sell tickets, sell raffle tickets, check people in, check them out, things like that, check on the stops throughout the day. We have 350 kayakers coming through again this year. As everybody knows, we sold out in 12 hours. As of right now, there are no tickets available, we have not come across anybody looking to sell tickets. But if you are, please reach out to us first before buying any tickets, because there's a lot of scams out there. So if anybody's looking to buy, we did post the other day, but looks like there's probably about 20 posts of everybody looking to purchase, but nobody's come forward to sell this year. So this might be one of those years that there'll be very few. Hopefully, we get closer, people's things will change. So, the other thing too is upcoming events, we have a lot of great events coming up. Obviously, we're doing Music in the Parks throughout the summer. We are partnering with Kiwanis in November for an event, and we do have another great event that we are looking to do October 12th. We are going to do a golf cart scavenger hunt. That will be open to families. There will be a cost, more information will come in detail, but all proceeds that we raise from that event is going to go to the Gibraltar Historical Society. So they'll be able to put that money to use for any upcoming things. So, you know, watch our Facebook page, our Instagram, there'll be flyers coming out as soon as we have all the details, but it'll be a family fun event, go around town, scavenger hunt, come back, get a couple of cool prizes, help us raise some money for the Historical Society. The other thing too, we have been really trying to come up with some ideas for the older kids. We've reached out to the younger kids, and they're easy to please. You can throw little events and they're happy.
Give them free popcorn.
Yeah, free popcorn, different things like that. They love it, the coloring books that we do with a couple of the other groups in town, they love that stuff. But the older kids are the hardest ones that we seem to have a hard time trying to really figure out what to do for them. We approached a very large group of kids a couple of weeks ago at the basketball court. They were up there hanging out at the community center, and we just said, hey, you know, if Rotary could do one thing for you, what would you guys like? And they all raved and said the first thing was, we want a regulated-sized basketball court. They said this one broken net is, you know, they use it.
The net they're using is horrible. It's in really bad condition, but they're there using it every single day.
And they have one net, not two, so they're playing off of one net, they're not, you know, really not even getting in to be able to play it like a full game. So the kids really, really were excited when we said, well, you know, maybe that's something we can do. So we kind of scoured the city and kind of looked and, you know, kind of came up with the idea, and so we're approaching you guys tonight, wanting to know if the Rotary would fund it, if we could possibly utilize the other part of the skate park. So you've got the skate park in the fenced-in area, but then there's the whole other area that has nothing, it's just a blacktop. We kind of looked at that area, we think it might be big enough for a regulation or close to a regulation court. Rotary would then pay for the nets to be installed, painting done on the ground so they have a full painted court, and possibly some benches. So it's kind of something we're looking at, but we wanted to approach council first to get approval before we go through the process of
Getting prices?
Prices of, you know, vendors to install the courts and the nets and things like that for us. And we know that the space isn't being utilized at this time. I know the skate park doesn't really get utilized as much as it used to. It kind of goes through waves, it feels like the kids, you know, they're all into the skateboard thing, and then they were into the push scooters. Now everybody's riding the electric scooter, so the skate park's kind of lost sight for a little bit, and maybe it'll kind of bring the kids back, because they'll, you know, utilize that a little bit more too while they're there. But one thing we did stress to the kids while we were talking to them is that, you know, we don't have a problem trying to help do things for them, but the biggest thing is that the kids have to be respectful, they have to be responsible, and take care of the stuff. So we did, while we were standing there, make the kids pick up all the garbage that was on the ground, and I said, this is the biggest thing. You guys don't respect the area, the city's not going to come and help you. You have to take care of it. So, you know, we're urging parents, if this is something that we go forward with, to, you know, really express to your kids, the city wants to help and organizations want to help and give these kids things to do, but you also need to encourage your kids to pick up after themselves. Don't damage city property. We do a lot of fundraising to be able to do these things, and we don't want to spend our time and money and then it be damaged and destroyed if it comes to fruition. You know, it's hard enough for us to raise the funds, and, you know, if that's the case, then we'd rather give the funds to somewhere else where it's going to be respected. So, but that's kind of what we're looking at, we're just looking for permission first and foremost, if, and then to kind of then come back to you guys later with pricing and information once we're able to reach out to a couple of businesses to see, you know, what we're looking at. So that's kind of where we're at with that. So, any questions?
Well, I just want to first off say, thank you so much for, number one, coming here and providing all the updates. I love that, and I think the frequency is great to continue that moving forward. Two, thank you for all that Rotary does, for the city of Gibraltar and its residents. And three, as far as the basketball, I think it's a great concept, and I love that you've engaged that from the older children or youth perspective. I'll obviously want to lean on the input from everybody around this chambers, including Parks and Recreation Department and DPW and Vince, and we got Planning Commission and DDA Representative Councilman Cox here, so I'd love for everybody to maybe provide any input, and then obviously we can work offline on any process, but
Yeah, and part of the reason why we chose that area too is, one, it gets the kids out of the parking lot, so, you know, obviously if the building's being used, the parking lot then becomes fully accessible. If people are using the pavilions for events, then they don't have a bunch of young kids hanging around the pavilions, as well as the playground equipment. The playground equipment, most it's young families, but when you've got, you know, obviously older teenage kids, their mouths are not very appropriate for a lot of young kids, so kind of pushing them away from that little area there too might help, you know, keep them on one side, the younger families and the people that are renting the spaces on the other side, and so everybody still has their space, and they're not losing their space every time it is, you know, being used or rented or anything like that. So that's kind of why we were looking at that area, and it's already a blacktop too, so that, you know, saves cost. That's a huge cost for us.
And I can say, I've talked to a lot of kids too, same thing, and we've talked about it, it was, I said I was excited when they said they wanted to do basketball, because that's something that the kids have said to me, and I've talked to a lot of kids. And they're using it. And they're using, and like the high schools has the basketball court out there, it's always got kids on it, there's, it's utilized all the time.
Right, but not all the kids can leave town.
Yeah, so there's not enough Everyone can cross Jefferson to go over to the high school.
And it's not safe.
Well, plus you're having to wait for the courts, you know, we really do need another court around here.
Does anybody have any input for Rotary members? Obviously, we will work immediately to make sure the right parties are in touch offline on the process, but any initial feedback from council, from Tammy?
We've talked down by Rotary, so we've talked about it, and I think it's a great idea, but I think we need to look into putting cameras back there, because it's going to draw, you know, a bigger crowd, and we need cameras back there.
Just for members that are attending virtually, that was our Parks and Recreation Director, and she's been working with Rotary offline on the concept. Any other feedback from council? Chief and newly-appointed City Administrator Vince, Councilman Cox from a planning and DDA perspective? If not, we can work with you offline on the process and make sure that the right parties
Yeah, no, we totally appreciate it, but it's something that, you know, we're hoping to kind of help, help the older kids, at least for right now. Like I said, the little kids, that's easy, you can do anything with them, but, you know, again, the basketball court, I think, is a good start. And if they utilize it and they, and they respect it and they, you know, take care of it, maybe that'll show, and, you know, then we can
Lead to more
Lead to more ideas coming up into the future for, you know, kids coming up and getting older and things like that. So we appreciate it, and again, any questions, concerns, you know, reach us out on social media, Facebook, Instagram, our email, gibrockrotary@gmail.com, message us through social media, anything like that. And again, and, you know, we have tickets available too, so if you guys are looking for tickets, you know, make sure you reach out to us this week at Music in the Park. So hopefully no rain, and we'll have a good show.
Thank you so much for all that you do for the city of Gibraltar, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there an age limit for your Hall of Famers?
They have to be 21 and up, because we do serve alcohol, so anybody that does volunteer for us that day has to be 21 and up, because there is alcohol involved, so, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Please approach the mic, make sure that light's still green.
Wayne Brennan, 30490 South Gibraltar Road. I'd like to personally thank the Police Department and the Fire Rescue, two involved within the last three weeks, I mean, within five minutes one time, within three minutes the next, and my mother-in-law, thanks you too.
That's amazing, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Any other members of public like to address council this evening? There will be another opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. Anybody? All right, well, that will close our public comment. Thank you all so much for being here and addressing council, and we'll move to our consent agenda. Council, in front of you on the agenda and in your packet, you'll see items A through E. Item A, bills of reference number 1A and number 1B. Item B, payroll number 896 and 897. Item C, city council minutes of 624/2024. Item D, beautification commission minutes of 71/2024. And item E, election of MML Workers Compensation Fund Board of Trustees. Council will be looking for a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
Motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
Motion by Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Council, any discussion on this evening's consent agenda? Katie, please call roll.
Hasmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is going to be communications. Council, in your packet, you will see item A, Wayne County Treasurer, right of refusal to purchase tax foreclosed property. Vince, or any members, if you'd like to add any further color on your perspectives, but we'll be looking for a motion to receive and file this communication and any other discussion with council.
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Discussion on this item, or any color, any parties would like to add?
You know, my sense of it, it's a very, very narrow lot, certainly didn't look like it was buildable or not, and so, you know, I wouldn't recommend pursuing, you know, through the tax reversion process.
Great. Any other discussion this evening? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Hasmore?
Yes.
All right, council, in front of you, and in the agenda, I have four items this evening. I'll go in order. Item A is administrative updates, variety of topics I want to cover with you this evening. One is for our SHUBA flow meter reports. Council, department heads, and other city employees received an Excel file, and that Excel file captures the rates or percentages of flow meter utilization across the last several years, and records it on a monthly basis. So we discussed this at council previously, it's a good reference for you to take a look at, to showcase the trends both year-over-year and month-over-month. Included in your packet this evening is going to be the flow meter report for May of 2024, and our percent utilization is 11.3%. That's compared to April 2024 at a percentage of 10.9%. I think the Excel file does a good job of just highlighting the trends and activities, especially the seasonality considerations that we see. The net of it is our flow meter utilization percentage on an average basis is lower this year than it was last year on a month-to-month basis, and obviously lower on an overall calendarized aggregation of the months, recognizing that this is only through May. So we're going to closely monitor this, obviously based on the great work of previous individuals, including one that's sitting here, former Mayor Gores, on investments in things like sewer lining, on the continued sewer lining work that's been done recently. It's really important that we continue to invest in those areas, because what we saw was our SHUBA Look Back Report gave us money back based on the lower percent utilization. So, in summary, that's what I want you to be aware of, we'll keep an eye on that Excel file, we'll monitor the trends, and this is the report from May. Any questions on SHUBA? Second item is going to be our resident survey. To residents, we're very excited that we launched this, tremendous thanks to, obviously, council, department heads, and Katie, and Chelsea, and Mary, and everybody involved in helping to make sure we disseminate this across the community. Simply put, it was launched on July 1st, and as of today, there was 218 responses. Really proud of the quick response rate, recognizing that we've only played on some of the channels that we established, one being a Facebook post, thank you Katie, the other being the tax bill distribution, where it was in the insert of the tax bills that were going out. A couple of things are going to happen moving forward, we are going to post the QR code at Music in the Park or any other relevant activities where members of the community are engaged. Number two, any businesses that are willing to have the QR code and flyer, we would love to have them showcase there. We're going to continue to follow up on the Facebook and other digital reminders. We're going to have residents that have volunteered to go door-to-door, so we've been assembling some targeted lists of addresses related to taxes or other individuals that might have missed the tax bill distribution, that we will leverage our door-to-door volunteers, so if you're listening or you're here in room, thank you so much. Simply put, we'll continue to update council, and we'll march towards the highest response rate possible, but we're very pleased to see 218 to date. Any questions, comments from council? All right, item number four, sorry, item number three in the administrative updates is going to be dispatch. We're incredibly excited that our neighbors in the city of Rockwood have made the decision to formally join us in Gibraltar. So Gibraltar will be absorbing the city of Rockwood's dispatch. I know we've talked about this at many public forums and council meetings, but thank you to our partners in Rockwood for making the decision to join Gibraltar. We're incredibly honored and grateful to have the opportunity to house their dispatch services here in Gibraltar. We're incredibly grateful to keep our dispatch in Gibraltar. And I just want to just, special shout-out to Chief Tangway for immense work behind that, and to Vince, which I sound like a broken record, for making sure that all things were buttoned up and that we had a very sound ability to approach Rockwood with a mutual partnership, and what we thought was going to be symbiotic for both communities. So, we had a, July 3rd is when they actually formally made the decision at their council meeting, and Chief Tangway has set us up to be meeting with applicable stakeholders on July 10th at 9:00 a.m. Chief, anything you want to add to that?
It's, since July 3rd, it moved to the top of the police department list. We're going to have to put some time and effort into it, we have lots of partners involved through the DCC and some other partners that will be here to help us get this moving along, and we hope to have it in place, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to dispatch for Rockwood, and we're going to promise to do everything we can to make it the most successful dispatch center downriver.
Incredibly well said. Thank you in advance, obviously it's a very high priority project for Chief, following his appointment as city administrator, but maintaining the DPS role to oversee the dispatch integration, so just thank you in advance for what's going to be a great journey, and we'll keep council updated on everything, including coming out of that July 10th meeting. Any questions, discussions on dispatch? Next item is going to be the COAM and POAM union engagements related to our contracts. We had a kickoff meeting on June 17th, and members of public, for those of you that are waiting to enter the room, we had our special meeting that was disclosed to discuss the kickoff meeting and the proposals that we received from both unions. Council, we had some great discussion on the topics. Bottom line, we want to make sure that those union representatives and everybody that serves our community are set up for success, and so we're going to be meeting with the union representatives later this week on July 11th at 11:30 a.m., and then 12:30 p.m. for those different union representatives with the goal of reaching an agreement that we can move forward with. But Chief, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think we're looking forward to meeting, and of course, July is a busy time for vacations and time off, and we're trying to navigate all that, to get all the members that need to be in the room in the room at one time.
Amazing. Council, anybody else to add, questions, comments? Thanks to Councilman Valentine, and Vince, and Amy, and all those involved in making sure we're prepared for those discussions. Moving on to item B in the report this evening is infrastructure updates. Obviously, if you kind of rewind back, we have a passout here for individuals sitting here, but if you rewind back, city Gibraltar needs some improvements across the infrastructure landscape, and we wanted to make sure that council directed and guided the establishment of an infrastructure advisory committee. It's amazing to see experts sitting at a table dissecting the opportunity in front of us. The infrastructure advisory committee's been meeting regularly, and so I want to pass over to Vince to talk us through any status updates around the infrastructure in the city of Gibraltar.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, with the handout, I used the agenda that we had at our last infrastructure advisory committee meeting, which is hard to imagine, that was a month ago. But going through it, just, I provided an update regarding the 2023 DDA bond issue and the closeout associated with it. The surplus bond proceeds that the DDA and city will work with is $805,000 and was incorporated into the 2425 budget. and was incorporated into the 2425 budget, the one that started here July 1st. And the DDA has another $250,000 in surplus available for this coming fiscal year related to projects that they could consider. And so we've had an ongoing list of possible DDA projects, and I'll ramble through them fairly quickly. The first being the community center HVA system. When we talked there, the committee really felt that we should go out for a more formalized bid process of which we need to do, and a lot of the detail is there, and so, you know, I need to put something together with that since I've been also working on some other bid specs as well. The next item being the city hall roof. I've drafted that, talked with the council member Mulner, just to take a quick review. I may circulate it to the members for their thoughts and comments. There are a couple of things in there I could use some expertise on to go out there, put a lot of effort into. Mr. Kane, he hasn't seen it, but he's going to have to coordinate, yeah, I know, the grounds and the staging area associated with it. City Hall parking lots, as well as community parking lot, community center parking lots, we have that as potential projects. Got thinking about if you put the bid spec together, short time to do it, you know, clearly if you went fast in the next two, three weeks, put something together, put it out to bid, next thing you know, you're awarding sometime in September. Work probably wouldn't start for a little bit later, and we probably have to have a discussion whether it's better as a 2024 project or maybe consider also 2025. The other aspect of it is don't lose sight of the fact that we have an election coming up and a lot of activity taking place here on city hall and even at the community center as well related to being a pre-election precinct, so. So those are some of the timing issues associated with it. DT, Public Works Building Backup Power, nothing more other than just taking that as a listed project. We've had some discussion regarding Public Works off-site fencing over at North Gibraltar there by West Jefferson. I've actually drafted something quickly associated with that, and again, in both of these cases, you know, we would look to have the DDA ratify the release of these before going forward. Wayfinding signs, pedestrian bike trails were listed in the DDA bond resolution, if you remember when we did the notice of intent, including those as eligible expenses, but we don't have any specific project details at this point. Gibraltar Road Bridge, we were looking at a $350,000 congressional request, you know, to be applied toward that project. Island Estates, we know long-term we're going to have to do something with that, and that's going to be probably a longer-term discussion related to what specific scope of work will be as well as the project financing. And then downtown parking, again, you know, we've talked about it at Captain Jim's there, and, you know, we do think there's a great opportunity to consider some on-street parking if particularly on North Gibraltar Road as well as Center Gibraltar Road as well. And I'm encouraging, and I'll bring it up at the meeting next week with our consultant with McKenna, to look at a possible, what's called, sub-area plan to see what you can potentially do to, you know, expand the parking capacity, you know, lighting that would go along with it, some aesthetics so that we can address not only some of it existing parking challenge, but also create the sense that there is opportunity for other businesses to come in here and utilize that on-street parking capacity. Going on to other projects that have been discussed, pump station catwalk removal, appreciation to John Zant for a lot of the work he worked with Bill Kane related to that. There's a lot of, I think enough detail again where I could probably put together a request for proposal, certainly again scrubbing the details on it, make sure the specs are understandable for contractors that would be inclined to bid for that type of work. We'd certainly like to do that in advance of it collapsing onto our pumps, and that would be a bigger problem. Other projects discussed, sewer lining, manhole rehab, you know, they're, you know, Mr. Kane and I had talked with Rains a little bit about that, and, you know, we're finishing up this first phase of sewer lining. We've got one little section of Bayview that needs to be completed, and there's some work that Bill has, is working on with a contractor. Are we doing that internally now? Are we? Okay. To correct that, and then it would make sense to finish up the sewer lining on that last segment. But in talking with Rains, one of the things they actually contemplated or mentioned is it may get higher value if you were doing some manhole rehabs as opposed to the next line of sewer lining, so. But it's also interesting too is, you know, with the data that the mayor had talked about with, from SHUVA, is really trying to pinpoint where these, where this infiltration's taking place. And I know Bill and I talked about it a little bit today about one of the vendors that Trenton is using to do some flow metering to potentially look at a couple of areas where we think we may have some problems. The next is just a reiteration at the middle, South Jib Water Main Project is completed at this point in time. Lead and copper program inspections process will resume. We've got the backer truck back as well as all the activities surrounding Public Works for the July 4th event, so they'll be back at doing the inspections on a schedule that's set up on a random basis. And then also, they're looking, we need to replace so many lines each year, and, you know, Mr. Kane's identified a handful of them that are fairly small, essentially from the water main to the curb box that are maybe somewhere no further than 10 feet that him, his crew could probably handle, so that we're making some progress in reporting it as well. The bridge inspection has been completed. I'm awaiting the report also with that. I was receiving, you know, the daily reports. They were here the week of June 24th, you know, two weeks ago, and I would just get, you know, just updates on the inspections that they were doing, the last being the Horse Island Bridge, and haven't received anything back because I did want to put that in the packet for council. I'll reach out to Collins Engineering as to where they were. I think the next thing they were going to look at was doing some concrete testing as part of the first phase of work that they were doing regarding the rehab feasibility work, so I could probably give you an update at the next meeting, a more detailed update on that. West Jefferson Water Main Project, got an estimate of 1.35 million, got a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture is the administrating agency. So we got some structure that we got to set up internally for the grant administration, and also Amy McEwen and I have to segregate the water and sewer operations for accounting purposes. The grant does want, because this is a water project, to make sure that the water system from an accounting standpoint is segregated from the sewer operation. We do some of that with, through the audit, Amy had indicated, but we got to make sure that it satisfies their requirement before going forward. And then we've also discussed with, you know, with the advisory committee, the solicit bids for the engineering services, which would also include what, an environmental report. Again, I think the discussion was that the selected engineer will probably sub out the environmental work that'll go along with that, but going forward, we want some, an engineering firm that's very familiar with USDA type of projects and the reporting that goes along with that, so. And then lastly, we just had a discussion, I had, just curious about the Lowell Street discussion for the street, knowing that there was an interest in some of the property owners committing, but also it came to my attention when Mr. Kane and I were meeting with Rains that that really is a high priority water main replacement, and so if it was ever to be considered, we could go forward and try and hopefully work something because also had responding to a call regarding all the gravel and rubble there, and the real problem is the street and the fact that there really is no drainage for that, and so, you know, I do think that there's maybe a way to work a really good project for that street if they're still interested in it, so. Then lastly, just there was other items for discussion. I think the one Horse Island thing was, you know, they seemed a little concerned that it was taking longer, particularly looking at getting into the library there at, I think, at Purdue University, and I think we kind of concluded this may be also resource management on their part to get people to, you know, like every construction and engineering firm right now, they're up to their eyeballs in work, so. But that was the extent of our last meeting and where we are. Some of the couple of things I've progressed on, but need to step it up a little bit more as well, so.
Thank you. Council, any questions or discussion?
I think Vince covered it quite well.
Appreciate that. And one thing we had, I know Councilwoman Cosmore, you had mentioned, I put it in the packet, was any way to consider showcasing the meeting minutes, right, publicly or?
Or the meeting itself, because I know we televise like the zoning board, and we televise the planning. It would be nice to do, televise the infrastructure advisory committee also, because I know we have to vote on it, but we can't all be there because it becomes, you know, boring. It'd be nice to be able to listen to the, you know, the conversation and the discussion, so. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd like to be able to see it, so when I come in and vote on it, I know what I'm talking about.
Something to consider, I think, maybe like something to take to the next infrastructure advisory committee, and what's the best way to make sure people have visibility to it? Vince, I don't have a reaction to that. Great. Moving on to the next item, the next item, item C is going to be related to this gentleman sitting next to me, Vince, and the amendment to the consulting agreement. As everybody's well aware, we motioned to appoint Chief Tangway to be our next city administrator. We discussed the transition plan considerations at the last council meeting, and one of the items that's critical to the success of not only our operation, but the transition with Chief Tangway is to make sure that we have the right structure in place for Vince in his service to the city. I'll just say a couple of things open up, and then Vince, if you want to speak to any of the specifics that you put in front of council. One item I'd like to call out is, you know, how do we think about viewing the partnership between Vince and Chief Tangway as our newly appointed city administrator? At a high level, this is kind of how I want council and the departments to consider it. It's Vince is going to be spearheading special projects. So council, in front of you, you see a sheet that Vince has created and previously shared with council to make sure that Vince is driving as a spear our special projects that are listed on this file here, items one through nine. Chief is going to be seen as the day-to-day operations lead, and so then you might say, well, how do I make sure that communication channels are effective? And what we'll say is to make it very simple, city administrator, and the email for that reaches both chief and Vince, and it's helpful because chief's getting acclimated to the email flow and what requests are coming in. So one central email makes it clean for both parties to be visible, and then the high-level delineation is Vince, special projects, chief, day-to-day operations. And that will help us make sure we have the right continuity and the right focus for Vince in regards to his consulting agreement. So I just want to give that backdrop and check in, but transitioning to the topic at hand, which is when we had established Vince in his interim capacity, we didn't know how many hours were going to be required for the services, and obviously Vince is only billing his time for services that are actually performed. And so in front of you, council, we're requesting you to action on the amended consulting agreement. This allowed Vince to take a look at how many hours he's currently using to perform services and to make sure that we have a plan for the special projects and the transition of Chief Tangway to our long-term city administrator. So we're asking for your motion to amend his consulting agreement to have an allocation of not to exceed 20 hours so that we have the right allocation based on the time that Vince is utilizing and expected to use moving forward. So council, this motion would be in your court for this amended agreement, and I don't know, Vince, if you had anything to add beyond the?
I did want to, you know, talk a little bit about the flexibility with that. I don't anticipate, you know, last month, I think I averaged 16 hours in the month of June, but I gave you some current projects, and some of them are already underway, for example, like the labor negotiations, a lot of the detail I think we covered, you know, earlier today, and so I'm hopeful that we can reach a quick resolution. With that, tonight you have before you the contract with Stevens Disposal, which is a big-ticket item, but that transition, you know, if approved, the contract tonight would take place here, probably start later this month with the 95-gallon totes, but the service would begin September 1st. My engagement with it would be minimal after, once things get rolling and the transition takes place. And I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't anticipate a whole lot more of engagement, just maybe answering questions that may arise. I mentioned the West Jefferson grant, that is just setting up the administration, preparing the environmental and engineering bid specs, and then talking, you know, with the mayor, with Rick and Amy as to who would be the long-term point of contact, that being the case, since I don't anticipate construction would start until maybe at the earliest of 2025, and even then, it may be a little bit long into '26. Zoning ordinance, tonight, we also have the request to approve that with project with McKenna. Again, my engagement with it will be probably on the front end, working with, asking, structuring some discussion and comments related to that, and then the consultant would disappear for a while and work on some language with that. And then on the back end, you're going to have it before the planning commission for their review and comments, scheduling the public hearing, and then ultimately hoping the council would adopt in early 2025. Purchasing policies and procedures, we've had some internal discussion with that, you know, certainly drafting an updated policy. Won't take a whole long time, but at the same time, probably more of a review aspect of it, certainly working with Amy and Rich Fonte as far as the treasurer end of it to make sure we're in line with that. We did talking about purchasing some requisition software so that we, again, strengthen the internal control with that. The account restructuring, some of which has to happen with the one grant, and then a fund balance policy that we talked about during the budget process. Again, that won't take too long, but more discussion with city council related to that. And then I've listed some immediate, you know, bids and RFPs, the pump station catwalk, again, redundant, community center HVAC, consulting engineering services, city hall roof replacement, the fencing over at North Jib, and then the parking lots, which will likely be a 2025 project. Critical to all of this, though, I think, is this item here, and that's something I really think I should be cracking on quickly, is helping with organizational assessment. Earlier this afternoon, Mr. Tange, the mayor, myself talked a little bit about it, what we envision as far as providing an outline for city council, what the services could look like for an engineer, whether it's full-time, part-time, you know, what the cost associated with that be, how you'd go about financing that internally or through projects, which we know we have a handful of them coming down the pike. And so it's on us to bring back something for city council discussion. We do think, long-term, that that's critical as far as the success of the community is to have someone in that capacity and certainly help with Mr. Tange as the city administrator going forward. And so, you know, again, I see it more project-related, and then had a couple of other items on there, you know, that we've talked about, the ongoing Horse Island Bridge analysis. I do think that carrying forward, that's going to be, a lot of it's going to be just arranging with the consultant, meeting with not only the advisory committee, but also council going forward. Again, refining the budget process, essentially putting the budget calendar, we talked about, and then a five-year forecast so that you do have an understanding, a kind of, Councilmember Cox kind of alluded to it, I think, with some of our discussion regarding the collective bargaining process and how this all fits into where we go. And then just lastly with the role of, so I think, you know, part of the transition that we've talked about is working more on a project basis, get some of that started, and was very grateful over the, during the event, to sit there and follow the, wasn't grateful, but I didn't participate, but I monitored and watched the collaboration that was pretty remarkable with the city team, you know, with Tammy, Mr. Tange, the mayor, city attorney involved as well, providing guidance through the process, certainly with Bill, our inspectors, and Tammy for ultimately posting it, and Amy looking at some alternatives financially for other supplemental, and it was just really remarkable to watch. So I think you got a really, really strong team here. I'm convinced you have a strong team. It's just work on some of these projects will help. It's just work on some of these projects will help, I think, guide it long-term in a direction that we all would like to see, so.
Really well said, and thank you so much for putting that together. So counsel, you know, kind of summarize, we have a critical need for Vince and the special project focus, and all that you've done today to create that platform. We got a necessity for Vince and chief to work closely on the transition plan, and some of the variables, like you mentioned, on the engineer assessment that will be brought back to council as a part of the steps we detailed for the transition. So counsel, I'd be asking for your motion to amend Vince's consulting agreement, to make sure we have the hours to do that according to the data that we've gathered so far on how much he's using, like he quoted, up to 16 last time.
Motion to amend the agreement concerning city administrator Vince Pasto to no more than 20 hours a week.
Second?
Second by Cosmore. Counsel, any discussion? All right, well, thank you, Vince, for all that you've done and all that you will continue to do, and Katie, please call roll.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumey?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, and last item for me, is Fourth of July. I just want to start by saying how incredibly proud I am of how the teams came together to make Fourth of July such an amazing one for the city of Gibraltar. And just want to take this opportunity to just thank so many individuals that made it possible, including navigating the difficult decision that had to be made, the right decision. Chief, to yourself, and to your broader department, and to Bruce Bullard as officer-in-charge, tremendous thanks. Everything, I know you'll detail more in your report, went incredibly smoothly. It was safe, and it was fun, and your team and your department and Bruce played an absolutely mission-critical role in that, so thank you. To Tammy and the Parks and Recreation Department, I mean, above and beyond, thank you. Would not happen without you, and all the Parks and Recreation members that make it possible, all the planning that went into it, and all the process that led us to allow us to make a decision that was for the best city of Gibraltar, while having all the backdrop to continue to have fun and celebrate Fourth of July. To our fire department, Chief Kane, thank you, and to you also, and to the broader DPW team, you all do a lot of work to make that possible. We're incredibly grateful for that. I know you also partner across communities such as Trenton, TPW, so special shout-out to them. To our neighbors around us, Trenton, Rockwood, Brownstown, our partners here in Gibraltar on the Border Patrol front, a lot of communities came together to support the Fourth of July in Gibraltar, and we're incredibly grateful for that. To our city personnel, that I get the privilege of seeing every day, but that made so much happen, Katie, Amy, Chelsea, Mary, and all the crew internally. Special shout-out to Bill Baker. For those that don't know, he's our electrical inspector as a partnership with McKenna. And Bill was literally on the front lines of the process that identified what needed to be identified to make the decision on our carnival partner. So Bill, if you're listening profusely, thank you. And to McKenna for being our building department that hired Bill as an electrical inspector, and to Laura in the office, who helped coordinate Bill to come and do the inspections. I mean, the process was perfect, and it led to a decision that could be made with the data, and it was because of all the parties I'm now continuing to rattle off. To our city attorney, it has been an absolute pleasure to have you in this role, for all that you've done already, to make sure we have the most effective and efficient legal counsel. You, I vividly remember you on the phone with us in the morning as we navigated what we felt was identification of observations that we had concerns about. And you stayed with us all day, and you made sure that we had the right documentation, and that we were approaching each and every step that we had to real-time navigate throughout the day, and the best legal position possible. So just thank you for that day, and for all that you've done in a short period of time as our city attorney. We're really lucky to have you. To our community, it's just really special. The community rallied. That's really cool, so just really proud. To sun seekers and to all the other Rotary and everybody else that came out and was such a critical piece of, not only in a point of time, but just more broadly, doing right by Gibraltar, just, it's special. And to anybody that I missed, it took an absolute army, and it was a really special holiday. I saw the community rally, there's a ton of people out, the fireworks were amazing, you had so many festivities and bands, and the beer tent and all, everything else that had our residents just rallying around, what is an absolute gem that we get to live in. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. From my next steps, one of you, we're going to have some documentation that we'll work with our city attorney on, as it relates specifically to the carnival piece, to make sure that everything that we did communicate on, both written and captured via video, is documented appropriately. So thank you in advance for making sure that that's handled correctly, and Chief Tangway for helping assemble all that information. The community seemed to really rally around not only the broader festivities, but the Fourth of July fireworks. So Tammy, just congratulations to you, and to the Downtown Development Authority, and Councilman Cox for playing a role as a voting member in that. I just want to make sure that we take this opportunity to debrief on what we experienced and what we learned, and where we want to go to set ourselves up for next year, and how we get in front of that planning. So last comments from me on this note are, you know, Tammy, we're going to lean on you in the Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that, while it's not specifically tonight, that we have a robust debrief on what we learned and where we want to go next year. To our planning and Downtown Development Authority, obviously we'll be leaning on them as a part of the debrief process in partnership with you. To our residents and all the feedback you've shared, we're listening and we're capturing it, and bottom line, it was an amazing Fourth of July. I thank everybody that made it possible, and we're going to debrief together to set ourselves up for 2025 and beyond. So just want to say thank you one last time, and counsel, or any department heads, or Tammy, please feel free to add any additional comments.
I thought it was turned out great.
Great.
Considering what happened, I said, everybody did their job, everybody rallied together, they all helped each other.
Awesome.
It's just Gibraltar.
Yes. All right, great. That closes my report this evening, and we'll turn over to council reports. Councilman Valentine, we're going to lean on you for Recreation Commission.
Well, I just want to thank Tammy, Tammy Gores, she does an outstanding job as the recreation director. Now, the music in the park this Thursday, and the Rotary Club will be there selling adult beverages. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Valentine? All right. Councilwoman Cosmore.
Okay. Thirty-third District Court, I do have a meeting on July 30th, because we're doing the audit for them, so I'll have more information when I come back after that meeting. For the Alliance of Downriver Watershed, the photography contest is still going on. I had posted that on our city pages, and it's also on our regular website for the city, if they go to, I think it's under, ah, I had the link and I didn't write it down, see, that's what happened. We'll make sure we get it on the front page, the flyer, but so make sure you're taking some nice pictures of the area, it's for the calendar that comes out every year, but there is contests, there is prizes, and mainly they're looking for pictures of like wildlife or our area, the water, anything around the water. And the Rotary Port, I think we already had the Rotary Port, just, but make sure you come out and buy tickets and help support them, and, you know, we need volunteers and members, please come out. And the Quanis just wants to, I just want to thank everybody for the money we donated for the pet contest, it went really well in the bingo. Oliver, Ethel, and Molly are the, are winners. And like I said, we're, anytime you'd like to join an organization within the city, please check into the Rotary of the Quanis, we're always looking for new members, it's a great way to get involved, great way to make friends. I mean, I, even though we're working, we have a great time. So if you want to meet some new friends and see what's going on, have, be involved, come out and tour meetings. Rotaries are the first and third Mondays, Quanises are every Tuesday, Tuesday at the community center, first and third Rosie at the VFW in South Rockwood. Rockwood, I don't know why I always say South Rockwood, I go there all the time, don't know where I'm going, I guess. Okay, and that's it.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Cosmore. Any questions for Councilwoman Cosmore? All right. Councilwoman Wood, talk to us about beautification and the historical museum.
Okay. Beautification is just continuing weeding and watering for the rest of the summer. We are using that wonderful gator that we have, and so I understand that there is a new one out there, well, new old one, so we're kind of like setting our sights on that, but I'm not keeping my hopes up, you know, we'll find out what's going on with that. But Sheila is really doing a great job, she really puts forth a lot of effort in watering. It takes her like all morning just to water, and we do that every other day, so I thank her, you know, greatly for that. I'm also still considering goat-scaping, and I wanted, and I know you laughed at me last time, Rob, so I was like...
I laughed with you.
So, anyway, we did go to Belleville to their goat day to find out exactly how this worked and what's happening with it, and I've spoke with their Belleville, the officials there, and they've done this, this is the third year, and they've never had any problems, injuries, electrocutions, nothing. Everything has been fine with them. And so I know that the last time we talked about this, the attorney had asked for some type of legal documents, and I sent that to Vince because, you know, it's a farmer that does this, so this isn't really like a big fancy legal contract, but it's something they sent to Belleville, and, you know, they've approved it. So I kind of want to look into that still. I don't know if that's, you know, on anybody else's list to do, but I find it to be interesting, you know, it's a very natural way, instead of using poisons to clean out areas, and it wouldn't be done until the end of August, beginning of September, so we're hopefully thinking maybe the kids are back in school, and they might want to just come over, maybe have lunch or something by watching the goats, and that's kind of what they do in Belleville, that's what you do, you just watch the goats eat, but I found it interesting, a lot of people found it interesting, and so I still wanted to bring that up. I don't know what we need to do, or if anybody else is interested or not interested, if you think it's stupid, whatever, but I'm, I'm all for it.
I love you for it, and I love the passion behind it. I give my full support, assuming that legal and our city attorney feels that we've protected the risk and liability. That's my only concern, but I'm fully supportive of it. So what I would recommend is, since you've already been working on that process, maybe you could just put it in next meeting's council packet with all the details and the assurance on the legality considerations, and that way, if you're proposing August or September as an example, then you'll track towards that timeline, that'd be my recommendation. But I love your passion for it, and you have my support, assuming it's safe and legally protected.
Okay, yeah, I do want to make sure that nothing happens, but like I said, in three years, Belleville's been, you know, fine with everything, so just wanting to keep that alive and keep that out there, because I haven't forgotten about it. That's it for beautification. The museum was very well-attended yesterday. Our July date is usually well-attended, like I said last time, because people come up from out of town. Bob Koch was here, and he is the gentleman that actually has loaned us all of the items in the Brownstown War of, War of 1812 for Brownstown, with the uniforms, the, what else do we have up there, the artifacts, and he's very well-versed in the War of 1812, so he was able to explain this to a lot of people that were up there. And, let me see, I think that is all I have, that is it.
Awesome.
It was a busy weekend for all, and yes, we all enjoyed the festivities of the Fourth of July, that's a very important day for our city, it's always been an important day, and we're glad that everything turned out, and moving forward, it was all great weekend.
Awesome. Thank you so much, everything you all are doing on the beautification front, and I give a shout-out to Sheila for all the watering, so thank you, Sheila, for listening. Any questions for Dorothy? All right. Councilman Cox, planning and DDA.
As the meeting was canceled for June, I have no report.
Great. I, just a couple of thoughts there. Katie and Vince, the onboarding meeting with the new city planner took place, and I think I updated council on that last time, and then Katie and Vince, I think you're meeting with Jane Dixon tomorrow to prepare with chair and other parties for the upcoming planning commission meeting. Councilwoman McNabb?
The procurement status on our weed harvester is still ongoing, and the weed harvester we have right now is on the trailer, it's broke, we're working on it. It had to get towed in last week, it's exciting. And that's about where we're at right now, we have a meeting coming up to discuss where we're going to be with that, and we just have to do maintenance on it at this point. That's all I have to report this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman McNabb. Any questions for Councilwoman McNabb?
I do.
Yeah, please.
Do you need money for that?
No, not at this time. We're going to do some testing.
Okay.
It's, it's an old German air design, and it's, it's...
Yeah, it's a Deutsch diesel or a Hartz diesel.
Yeah, Hartz. Everything's German, too, on the manual, so we've got to find a German.
Let us know.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Thanks, Councilwoman McNabb. Councilman Molnar?
No report.
Great. We're now going to move on to the next section, which is Parks and Recreation Director Gores.
I will have a Fourth of July report at the next DDA meeting, and then we will talk about it also. And our next recreation meeting is in August, the first Tuesday at 6:30 at the community center. This Thursday is Music in the Park, it will be five towns down, the Meat Guy will be there, and Stay Frosty Ice Cream, Gibraltar Rotary will be there selling adult beverages, and hopefully we'll have a great warm day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Parks and Recreation Director Gores? City Attorney?
I was thoroughly enjoying working with everyone. Gibraltar should know that they have a great city government representing them on all fronts, and it's been a pleasure so far.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. City Administrator? Got two items.
First is, you know, a request for council to approve a solid waste service agreement with Stevens Disposal. The structure of the agreement mirrors in many regards the request for proposal, other than we removed anything that was related to the bid aspect of it, and then expanded certainly upon the general provisions, you know, working with the city attorney in that regard, and so did a review with Kevin Shipman, who's on the audience, with Stevens Disposal, the, if approved, the contract would begin September 1st and terminate June 30th of 2029. It does specify the residential collection rates, which are inclusive of the yard waste program that we have, the seasonal yard waste program, does have the solid waste, or I should say, the recycling bin that we have here at city hall, but also an alternate that in the event that it's mandated, that there is a rate in place that will be honored based on the bid that was submitted, and well, as providing 64-gallon carts at that time, should that mandate take place, so. You know, with that, we would recommend approval of the agreement with Stevens Disposal for the service.
Counsel, I know we had a lot of discussion and a lot of offline work done to prepare this, I know there was discussions with both Priory and Stevens. Obviously, we discussed, counsel, some of the differences between the two proposals that we received, obviously, many advantages towards Stevens that we had discussed, including the containers. So counsel, the motions in your court that Vince is requesting to approve the agreement with Stevens, to ensure that they are the future waste disposal management company for a city of Gibraltar.
Motion to approve the residential solid waste service agreement with Stevens Disposal.
Second.
Second by Molnar. Any discussion?
I was talking with Rich, and we were, he kind of let me know this information, because I don't know that much about garbage and recycling and hauling and what have you. So the cost of, and I hope I say this right, that the cost of the hauling and the cost of the landfill are two separate things, and I did talk to Vince today, so if you could explain that?
You know, the essence of the question and the issue itself is, is it common for a municipality to bid exclusively or solely the collection and the city incur the cost of landfill costs? The answer is, it's not very common. It seems to be something that we've done here in Gibraltar, and I think it's also somewhat common for downriver communities in relationship to Riverview. It's not normal to have a municipality operate a landfill that serves, you know, a broad area, and so a lot of times what you do is, when you put these out there, the bid itself will be for the service, as well as their responsibility to pick up the, the cost of the landfill. Many times, they have existing agreements or negotiate new agreements if there's a greater volume with the landfill in that, but it is, you know, I think, more of a Gibraltar and uh, with that, uh, but most of the time it's going to be where you're just paying one rate and don't have to worry about the landfill aspect of it. But, you know, we got what we have here, and I'm not saying it's, uh, wrong. It's just different, uh, so.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, everybody's aware of that. Also, the recycling, uh, when they dump it at wherever the recycling facility is going to be, are they going to do that same, like, pick ticket so we know that that's happening?
The specifications are, can, in the agreement are that, one, uh, you know, we obviously are going to know what tonnage is going to the landfill. We'll know what recycling, uh, you know, uh, the tickets are, uh, as well. And then we also have the yard waste to know where that's going and, and what the, uh, the volume, uh, would be delivered at that. So those are all specified in the agreement.
Great questions. Counsel, any other discussion? All right. I will pass it over to Katie for roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Well, that motion is carried. I, last comments there. One is, um, I know we've had a lot of feedback from the community around the waste management, um, and recycling, uh, so we will now be having a new partner once this agreement is just effective. Thanks to Stevens, uh, for your proposal, uh, and for your future service, uh, the City of Gibraltar, and obviously for the fact that you've been a past partner in the City of Gibraltar. Number three, I think what's important is, uh, the, the team up front, uh, including Chelsea and others, have started compiling some information that will roll out to our residents around what to expect in the transition, uh, the new container you'll receive, and any other operational components of this to make sure it's real seamless. So we'll be getting ahead of that communication as, uh, the one who leads it, Katie, and our communication efforts will make sure that we get all the information out so that you're prepared for this transition that will take place. But, uh, to Vince, who spearheaded this process, thank you tremendously, uh, for everything you've done to get us to the state.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, related to the, the rollout there, Kevin and I, when we met, reviewed the, the contract last week, is ready, wants to meet with our staff related to how the rollout's going to take place. And also I think he wants to, you know, his points of contact to get familiar with him as well and, and his staff if there's any issues or complaints. So we look forward to the working relationship, uh, having worked with them in the past. They're, they're top notch, so I think, look forward to it, so.
We appreciate you. All right, next item, back to you Vince.
Uh, this item is, uh, requesting approval of a proposal received by McKenna for updating the city zoning ordinance. If you recall, we received, uh, with a lot of effort from McKenna, a $50,000 grant from the state, uh, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, NISTHA, uh, for this. The amount of their proposal, uh, is for $45,000. To do that, uh, I do think, uh, you know, in going along with it, uh, we'll have to put some of that grant money and if not, some additional money toward, uh, legal review for this. It's, it's a, it's a significant undertaking and so, uh, but it's a good start. I think everybody agrees it needs to happen. And so, uh, you know, they've outlined, uh, uh, scope of work, uh, and you'll see many times where it's referred to staff, that's going to be staff and review committee that's been established to provide the guidance that they have, and then ultimately find its way to the, to the planning commission. Again, I think we anticipate probably a six-month process from start to finish before its final adoption in front of the city council.
Awesome. And just, uh, for broader backdrop, counsel, we have a ordinance committee that includes planning and DDA members, uh, as well as council members and others that will help kind of navigate this process. And obviously, we're really grateful for the $50,000 grant, which doesn't have any hooks to us as a City of Gibraltar. So, uh, counsel, Vince will be looking for a motion to approve the ordinance update proposal submitted by Kenna, which will then kick off the ordinance committee, uh, and the process that Vince had described.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, we have a motion by Cosmore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Any discussion on this proposal?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up a couple of things. Appreciate the $45,000 amount and that being under the window, but there's a couple additional service requirements that are outlined in here. That would concern me, uh, additional costs. So I'd like it to be a knock to exceed amount.
Well, if I, if I may just, you know, in response to that, uh, the additional service typically are going to be where, and this will obviously be upfront, uh, where the client, us, has not done a very good job of managing the process. And so part of this is trying to structure it, keep things on task, and, uh, what they're protecting themselves against is many reiterations of the same thing. So it's, it's up for us to, to make sure that we, um, you know, engage in, in, in the review of it, offer our thoughts and make sure, and it's incumbent upon, you know, myself, if I'm overseeing the administration of it, that they do what they're supposed to do as well. So, so you've seen many times where there's, uh, some misinformation or I shouldn't say misinformation, misunderstandings about language, and that's where I think, uh, in some cases where, where, where these projects get costly is these multiple re-, uh, reiterations of aspects of it. So I think it's reasonable to get it done in the timeframe and, and the scope that they have it. It's just, uh, we just can't keep changing things, uh, all over the place.
And I, and I saw that, it's a good flag, Councilman Cox, but the, the prerequisite, the sentence of like, if, if it's based on request assured me that it's really more of us directing the process versus McKenna doing additional work without direction by the City of Gibraltar. That's how I read it.
That's, that's really true.
Yeah, we want to do one blanket of additional revisions, not three of them, and we don't want to have seven meetings trying to come to the terms.
Precisely.
When it's a thousand dollars a meeting.
Precisely.
Sure, to make sure where it tells meetings, we get everything covered that we want in there.
And that's where I think, you know, part of my, my responsibility is to make sure the structure between, uh, you know, you know, the staff and the consultant meeting with the advisory committee is very, very, uh, organized and concise, and we walk away with clear direction for the consultant to take the next steps.
It's a good flag. Any other discussion, please?
Yeah, I know you, um, mentioned there's no hooks, and I think that, um, you know, they mentioned five goals that, uh, they're going to suggest, and I think that the term suggest means that they're not hooks, they're just suggestions.
Yeah.
We could obviously not, uh, take those suggestions. And those, uh, suggestions are to, um, identify and advocate for modifications to policies and procedures to remove barriers across the housing continuum, uh, for those with low incomes or marginalized populations. Increased access to stable and affordable quality housing options for households with extremely low incomes. Increase the supply of the full spectrum of housing that is affordable and attainable to Michigan residents. Equitably expand the, uh, supply and affordable and accessible rental units statewide for older adults. Promote the ability of older adults to age in place of their choice. So the, yeah, those are the five goals that they, um, are going to suggest to us.
And that's part of, uh, the hook, if you will, for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for this grant. I did talk with McKenna specifically about that. And again, there is no obligation on the part of the city. And the other part that's interesting is when you look at the city's master plan, we have a very hi- a much higher, uh, level of affordable housing than what you're going to find in most communities. I think they identified like 17% and the standard is somewhere around nine, 10%. So we've kind of achieved a lot of that. I think part of it is with some of the rentals, part of it is with the manufactured housing development. And so I think we've done a, you know, we've clearly met the intent of what the NISTHA was wanting with some communities. So I did have the conversation with McKenna, and, and again, it was in the context that it, it's not an absolute requirement that just look at it and.
Sure.
And he certainly, I think, we're really in a good position related to the, the master plan and, and the findings that went with that, so.
Any other discussion, counsel, department heads? All right, Katie, please call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Well, uh, motion carried. Thank you for all the work on that. To your point, we're going to need clear direction and guidance so that we stay in the guardrails of a clear timeline and, uh, avoid extra work unnecessarily.
That is my goal, a challenge, an obligation.
Really great move though, so I'm excited for that process. Thank you. Uh, Vince, anything else from you?
Nothing else.
So you, you see Vince sitting here as interim city administrator. Obviously, just to be very clear, uh, our newly appointed city administrator is going to be moving chairs, uh, in future meetings, uh, as he becomes the full-time city administrator for the long term, and Vince as a consultant that we lean on heavily through the end of the year, according to council's direction. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Miss having you sitting right here, but we will have you close to the operation transition, so just really appreciate you Vince.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any questions for Vince before we move on? All right. Clerk Tomasek.
I have no report tonight.
How about Treasurer Fonti?
No official report, but, uh, I did want to let council know that, uh, what's been ongoing is that, uh, and I suggest that council revisit this correspondence. It's the September 8th correspondence from Plant Moran, their last audit. And, uh, there was a strong suggestion there that, uh, one of the goals should be the implementation of internal controls. They've recognized some deficiencies there, and those internal controls both go two ways, preventative and detective. And, uh, to that end, I've been working between those two, trying to identify that. And shortly I'll be, uh, reporting to council on some of the things that, uh, we've located and, and need fixing. But, uh, I've also mentioned, uh, to Amy, uh, she had proposed, uh, a sweeping change based on this letter back in October of 2023, and I would encourage her and, and the rest of the team in the office to start implementing that plan. It's a good plan. It was well thought out, and I, uh, I compliment her for doing that, but it needs to be implemented. That's it.
Thank you so much, Treasurer Fonti. Counsel, any questions for Treasurer Fonti? All right. Uh, Finance Director Amy, floor is yours.
Um, the first item I have for everybody is the transfer from water to general fund. It's a fourth quarter transfer, so it's not the 80,000 amount that you saw in the other three transfers. I actually, I reconcile it and make sure that it's the exact amount of the transfer, and it's close to 80,000 this time, $79,808.37. I would need a motion for that.
Counsel, uh, Amy's looking for a motion for the transfer of water operations to general fund.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Cosmore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Counsel, any discussion on this transfer? All right, Katie, please call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Motion carried. Amy, back to you.
The second is the transfer resolutions for major and local roads to general fund, um, for the fourth quarter. It's 17,554.27 from major and 17,554.27 from local. Um, this reconciles CPW's time and the equipment usage that we use on major and local roads. In fact, Bill can testify, I was bugging him up until June 30th about filling out their sheets. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Uh, counsel, we'd be looking for item B, uh, a motion to support the major and local roads to general fund transfer.
Make the motion for general.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Counsel, any discussion on this transfer? Katie, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried, and Amy, back to you.
Okay, and my third item is to purchase a broadcasting computer. Currently, the computer back there didn't have the right Windows to run the software to be able to broadcast our meetings to everyone. And we had a sort of, kind of Band-Aid to put on it with a laptop, but we need to get a permanent computer in there. I originally suggested the Lenovo that's 656.99, but Marsha pointed out that there's one that's $3 more and has a bigger hard drive. So I would actually recommend that we go with the one for 659.99. It's kind of near the bottom. You can see it's like recommended with the specs. As, um, the new broadcasting computer, I did reach out to IT and check to make sure that that would meet all the specs that we needed, and it is, does have Windows 10 and is a lot faster than what we currently are operating back there.
Well, our ability to broadcast the meetings is absolutely mission critical. And Katie, I like the addition with Amy on the ability to showcase some of the podium that we've done on the, um, so thank you for that. Counsel, uh, Amy's put the packet in the description. She's looking for a motion to approve this purchase for this computer.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Cosmore, second by Valentine. Counsel, any discussion on this item?
I mean, it just makes sense to pay, we're paying $3 for double the hard drive cap. So it just makes sense.
And IT, sorry, go ahead.
My, my only note is with respect to the purchasing policy. Rich mentioned it earlier about some of the policies that we have in place that have, you know, we've just gotten away from. We have a purchasing policy, um, and I know I talked with Chief Tangway about this earlier. We have a purchasing policy, uh, in our charter, uh, and then we have a 1985 policy, uh, that was adopted. I know it's on Vince's purview to, uh, look at revisiting and offering, uh, some suggestions for updating our purchasing policy. But, um, to date, we have to go back to what we have in place, and we've gotten away from it by having department heads make their own requisition requests, uh, directly to council, and that's contrary to everything that we have in our governing documents. If it's a necessity for now while we're in flux of, of, um, having a proper purchasing agent appointed and acting, I understand that. But it's, it's imperative, I think, that we get back to our governing documents on, on this topic particularly.
Can I ask what was not following the purchasing policy? Because I did research this, I did Google shop, I checked Best Buy, I checked Amazon, I checked other sites to make sure that this is the best possible price before bringing it to you.
Yeah, no problem. So the purchasing policy that we have in place appoints a single point of contact for purchasing or requisition requests. So that single point of contact is the part where it's not in accordance with our, our governing documents at the, at the current time.
Vince, did you have some?
The only difference is Vince should have requested it, or Rich, Rick could have requested it. That's the only difference.
One of the things that, if I might just inter, you know, interject here is that you, on the list of things that we had is, and, and, you know, Amy and, and Mr. Fonte and I've had some discussion is to actually get purchasing requisition of which the administrator approves it. And I think that's what you're getting at, that they will see anything above and beyond what that is, whether the, the policy was followed, where you have, you know, where you're required to get, uh, you know, competitive bids. And so I will tell you, in my past experience, I signed off on all electronically requisitions, uh, just as a regular basis. And so I think those internal controls would help immensely, uh, not only for a small organization, but when the much larger ones that I had worked in the past, I mean, everything ran through the administrator, so I think.
I like it.
Yeah. And their software is reasonably priced too, and, and ties in with our, uh, our.
Looking at number five on your strategic project list, right?
That's all right, that's an easy one. Here, buy this, and then you guys figure it out.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question for Amy.
Please. Please.
How come you're 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 up in front asking for a computer that's $600?
Because our purchasing policy says that anything that is over $500, I need to have council's approval for.
Is that just for you, or is that for other people?
That is for everyone. That is our purchasing policy. I'm.
Counsel needs to keep that in mind, and so do the department heads, because I find that Amy is 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 doing what she's supposed to be doing. And we're coming across issues that we have to dig back to that didn't have that type of approval. So thank you, Amy.
Yes, I appreciate you, Amy. Any other discussion? All right, great. Katie, please call roll.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
All motions have been carried, A through C. Anything else, Amy, for us?
No.
Well, thank you for all you're doing. All right, great. Why don't we pass it over to Police Chief Tangway, who will have a new seat next meeting?
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for the fireworks. It was a long day, or for the Fourth of July, it was a long day. Our officers put in a lot of time, and some of them were extremely tired by the end of the day. I can tell you that much. In front of council tonight is the police year and month comparison for June. You can see our numbers are up in some categories, down in others. There's also an overtime and school resource officer report. You'll see our overtime budget ended about $30,000 below budget, and our dispatch overtime was about $8,000 below budget. SOR billing, we were able to provide you how much school resource officer funding we received through the budget year. And you should see, that's a substantial amount of reimbursement for our SOR program. Don't have to update you on the Rockwood vote that I had in there because I was prepared to do that, but the mayor stole my thunder there. That's great news for us. We have a couple of training schools scheduled, and I do have an update to add to this packet that I received the court June report showing the City of Gibraltar owing $904.67 when we're budgeted for $68.50 a month to owe them. So we're down to this month of $904.67.
I swear.
I also included in this report, and this is something that I wanted to do a while back, just haven't got time, the building department report. This is their software report. I didn't really look it over much, but I figured council should see it. This is a report that the building department ran for me, and we attached it to this packet.
I like this.
And lastly, I just want to cover that, you know, for for the Fourth of July, if you drove around town, the town was packed. Resident streets were packed with home parties. The restaurants stayed open for the first time in a couple of years, I think, on the Fourth of July holiday. A lot of people in town. I can tell you that at the end of the day, the police department had one arrest, not related to any of the activities, and that was much later in the evening. The fire department responded to two calls during the day. One was at 6:42 a.m., again, not related to any of our activities. And we had no traffic crashes, which just amazes me that we got all those cars out of town with not even a minor fender bender. So job well done.
Congratulations to you and your department on all that made it possible. Appreciate it. Any questions for Chief Tangway? All right, Chief Kane?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The fire department, from June 20th to July 3rd, responded to 20 calls. There were five, 15 rescues, one fire, and a few other mutual aid ones that we did. They weren't really mutual aids, they're more of public assistance. We had a couple of calls that went out that weren't there. So there are no patients. But the guy showed up, or the girl showed up. I want to thank, I always say I like to thank the guys. The guys, guys and girls on this fire, on the fire department are killing this. They're doing a great job. There's not many people that like to wake up at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and then go home, and then turn around and come right back. They're doing a great job. My hat's off to them. They're very dedicated. As you've seen, we had one resident come up and thank us. Everybody's very professional, what they should be. I try to tell them to treat everybody like you're treating your mom or your dad. One thing you guys might have seen, Dorothy, you brought this up earlier, was that orange Kubota, not tractor, but ATV, sitting out there. We got that as a gift to borrow for the Fourth of July because our John Deere that, our John Deere gator that the beautification is using is, seen better days. I want to apologize for the beautification because when they came to use the John Deere that we have set up with water in it for them to water their flowers, I had it parked right next to that one. And they couldn't take it. They couldn't use it. Dorothy had mentioned that to me, the one helper went and looked at it, looked at the green one that they drive all the time, looked at that orange one, and said, there's a Cadillac sitting right next to this, and we can't drive it. So I didn't do that intentionally for you. But I want to thank McAllister Rental for letting us borrow that for the weekend. They came here to pick it up this morning, but I wanted to drop it off and park it out front so you guys could see what was borrowed if you didn't see that. That's not a cost to us at all. So they'll be picking it up tomorrow. Unfortunately, for Dorothy's sake, they'll be picking it up tomorrow. And that should, the Fourth of July went well. I had a lot of guys and girls working the entire day, just in case something were to happen. The fireworks went off well. The big explosion at the beginning probably scared a lot of people. But we should be known to that because they do it every year. But it went well. The only, the only question, or the only comment from the fireworks people I had were the Chinese floating things, that you light them up and let them go up in the air.
Lanterns.
Yeah, the lanterns. They were actually affecting the fireworks. They, the way the wind was blowing, they're blowing them over toward where all the fireworks were stored. And that's one thing you really don't want to have, is a lantern come down and all that explosives that are right there. So the only thing I would request is, during the fireworks, if people don't light those off, because we really don't want a big explosion of all the fireworks going off at once.
100%. Thank you for that comment. And we will make sure we get ahead of that. Any questions for Chief Kane?
I just want to ask Chief Kane, we may want to recognize that you received one of your firemen back from injury.
Oh, yeah. John Woods out there, he's been off for his hand. He can show you how straight his hand is now. He's back. Hit and miss, I guess. He's working, he's working his way back into it. But he is back from a three-month relaxation period, and he's raring to go to see all the residents in town again.
We, we're very lucky for you, Woody, and welcome back, and appreciate you for being back.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Chief Kane? All right. No unfinished business this evening, no new business, no table and referred items. So that will turn us to our public comments. So members of public, please approach the mic. Make sure that light is still green, and if you could state your name and address.
Wayne Brandon, 30490 South Gibraltar Road. We have housing inspections, inspections on commercial property and stuff when it's sold in the city. Everybody's got to have an inspection, right? How did McKenna miss 13300 Middle Gibraltar? I was told before that it was a non-complying business, and they were allowing people to live in there even though it's owned commercial. And now there's somebody else moved into it again after it was sold, and I want to know why it wasn't tagged by McKenna. If they inspect everything, how could they miss it?
Yeah, I will make sure we take that as a follow-up and understand what happened there.
Because it it's against zoning. I mean, it's against all the fire laws and codes and everything. And I just want to know why.
Appreciate that. 13300 Middle Gibraltar, you stated, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Wayne. Any other members of public have any comments for council this evening? Go once. All right.
Okay, I have one thing I wanted to add.
Yes, please.
Okay. I forgot to add this to my museum report. I wanted to thank the Rotary for thinking about the Gibraltar Historical Museum. I know you were talking about its scavenger hunt, and even if it doesn't come through, whatever, I do appreciate that you thought about our Gibraltar Historical Museum. So thank you so much for that. I forgot to mention it. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Love it. Well, thanks for closing us out there. With that, we'll close public comment, and we'll be looking for a motion from council to adjourn this evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Cosmore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Great. Hope everybody has an awesome evening. Thank you so much.
Yeah, probably, usually do take those for cash.